I hereby call to order the regular board meeting. The, actually, it's a Board of Education study session for October 24th, 2024. I have, I see no one wishing to make any comments and I have no cards, so we will adjourn now to closed session and reconvene at 7:00 PM.
Excellent job.
That was very hard.
This, I'd like to reconvene the Board of Education study session of October 24th, 2024, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Harper will lead us.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, there's no report out of closed session. We have one member who is not present, Mr. Houston, otherwise, all other members are present. I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move approval.
Moved by Mrs. Harper.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Olson.
Okay, good. I was gonna say, I forgot my laptop.
Oh.
Aye.
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 Do, we have no public comments tonight, so we'll move on to our study session, which is a presentation on the Framework for the Future.
All right. Tonight, we are very excited and grateful to have the opportunity to share an update on the implementation of the EUSD Framework for the Future. As you know, EUSD has been on this journey for the last three years, where we've engaged with our design team to identify the knowledge, the skills, and the experiences that we want for our EUSD students. We wanted to focus our efforts to ensure that all of our students receive those opportunities where they participate in meaningful learning experiences, so that they may thrive and become their best selves. And so through that work, EUSD was able to create a clear north star with the framework, a framework that was learner-centered, that includes a learning profile of the priority outcomes that we want for our students, and our vision for a learning model that would support that. So this has been shared throughout our school community, and this year, we were able to launch this school year with a message from Dr. Ibarra.
It begins with a vision, as everything does, and that for us in EUSD is to actualize the unlimited potential of everybody, that we will all be empowered, encouraged, engaged, making mistakes. And that vision started with this premise that we're all in this together, and it's that collaboration that's allowed us to get to the answer that we need. So the Framework for the Future actually began with a conversation with stateholder groups, with all stateholder groups. During COVID, we worked collaboratively with our, all our labor partners, our classified staff, our teaching staff, our parents, and our community members. We were going to design, i.e., co-construct, co-design, the district that we would all want to be a part of. We were having a lot of challenges, both behavioral, academic challenges, making sure that we were getting our students up to speed, in a manner that, that was reflective in our achievement scores, looking at different ways to measure that. So there was work that we didn't do. When we were done with COVID, I remember asking the group, are we going back to the same sense code? Was where we were working for us? And of course, the answer was no. During the pandemic, we had this image, this icon, and it was that we always put safety in the middle of everything we were going to do. As we were transitioning out of COVID, I substituted it. We're gonna now put the students at the center of all that we're going to do, hence this learner-centered approach. So we started with our students. We talked to students from elementary into middle school, and the data was pretty consistent. They want their learning to be relevant. It's an old adage, right, when we were in school, is, why are we, why do we need to learn this? Why do we need to know this? You know, how am I going to use this? And those questions continue to this day. So when we look at the learner profile, which is front and center for our Framework for the Future, it really answers the question of, what do we want our students to learn? What do we want our students to be able to do when they go through our systems? We came to this notion of the six outcomes that we wanted our students to learn, and that's our, our profile. We want our students to be empowered learners. We want them to own their education.
At Hidden Valley Middle School, so I love this start of mine, students feel a power over their writing that comes from a deep understanding of what they read.
It's happened on my scholar warrior winner.
Whether it's students leading the all-school assembly.
In, in, out, sick, after, it's always the same.
Or conducting daily meetings.
Why is gratitude important?
In the EL curriculum, students are leaders of their own learning.
We want our students to be empathetic collaborators. If you look at all our language within our vision and our mission, it's about working together.
In homeroom.
Hand it across.
The day begins with team building.
This hand goes over here.
Like this exercise, led by students.
I'll cross it now. By team building, they get to focus and learn about each other's strengths and build upon them, build and center family.
We want our scholars, our learners, to be ethical, do what is right even when no one's looking.
At Pioneer.
I got a thought, okay.
Members of the Peace Patrol are responsible and caring. They ensure TK students are safe and having fun on the playground. At Glenview Elementary.
We have fourth graders coming in, helping us with art, helping us with reading sometimes.
These TK kids look forward to working with their fourth-grade buddies.
They really look up to these big kids, too, and the big kids get some empathy out of it.
We want our students to be effective communicators.
Juniper students engage regularly in social-emotional learning by watching Pause for the News.
There is a lot going on this week, starting with today.
The show is anchored by students and shines a spotlight on school positivity.
It's what that's our way.
Being able to communicate with one another, being able to communicate with adults, being able to do presentations.
Fourth-grade English learners can face their fears of public speaking.
Ladies and gentlemen.
By debating. Should Oak Hill have school uniforms? Students present arguments.
They're so weak.
And rebuttals in front of their peers.
I taught them that this would help them in job interviews, maybe in a courtroom, if they're a lawyer in a courtroom.
Our students are going to be part of the global community eventually when they graduate, and they're going to be part of figuring out what works and what doesn't in our world. And so they need to be able to promise all.
These fourth graders have been learning about earthquakes and tectonic plates. Now, they're engineering earthquake-resistant buildings. The group project teaches positive communication, collaboration, and compromise.
How do we ensure that all students are demonstrating these outcomes? So how are we going to do that? And that starts with the learning model. So when we're designing lessons, when we're designing projects, it's about creating an experience for a student that leads somewhere they are. When you're talking about personalized learning, we're really looking at, what are the students' strengths? Can we develop something that, that taps into the students' interests? How do you ensure that a student owns what they're learning? So really having them understand what their danger, their, their achievement results. We have great examples of that happening throughout our system already.
In order to be a leader of my own learning, I have created a learner profile.
Conway students of all ages present self-evaluations with confidence and clarity.
My strengths and attributes are helping others in math.
When we're talking about personalization, also its choice. If students are given a choice, they're doing a research project, if they choose the topic, they may be more engaged into completing it, because now they're pursuing something that they have high interest in.
In our eighth-grade STEM class, students are designing a customized object for one of their teachers, pencil holders, a bathroom pass, a case for a gaming controller. The only limits are their imagination.
That second part of this is authentic learning. So when we're creating the, designing these lessons, again, it's about meaningful and relevant experiences for our students, making the learning jump out of the page. You know, if you're reading about something in the book, how can you do this?
We're trying to have a legitimate insight here with the driving question, what is culture?
Do you want to brush off the artifact?
This social studies class is digging up the past.
Document that.
To learn about different eras of civilization.
And try to decide what was this culture like? What can we learn about these people from the artifacts and fossils that we found?
Now we have competency-based, teaching our students the standards that we want them to know. Really about using assessment to identify where the students are, what is the student being next, and now let me design an activity, which teachers do all the time.
I need you to rotate.
During rotations, our teachers take a targeted approach based on each individual's progress.
Tap it out. Yeah, uh, duh. Good.
From a small group exercise with the teacher, to a writing station about life cycles, to students working independently, everyone's confidence and competency rose.
Since the kids are at their ability level, we can target in on those areas and focus on the needs of each student, love them when you can do them.
And then the final component is inclusive and equitable, evolving every, doing it in a meaningful way that makes a child feel like they're, they're a critical component of the learning process, a key member of a group, like when they're working in collaboration. Are they all contributing? So when you put all these four components, it's really about designing these lessons that will be high engaging and get our students to fully actualize their own limited potential. How are we going to do this? Is we need to provide time. We already have that. In elementary, we have the wheel collaboration time.
NV Ranch is advancing EUSD's learning model by providing enrichment time for students that coincide with collaboration time for teachers. This TK class is taking a drawing lesson from a visiting art instructor while their teacher meets other staff.
It helps us focus on our kiddos and plan out our weekly lesson plans and just help each other collaborate and work together.
Daniel had something like this.
Coding, programming, and electrical engineering are all included in the STEM lesson.
Was that your code?
Teachers from the enrichment wheel team bring highly engaging activities, like these Ozo bots.
Really a win-win situation. The students are getting enrichment in areas that we normally couldn't provide, and we are also getting a chance to beef up our teaching, get together and collaborate with our colleagues.
Teachers have time to come together, look at their students, and start designing these authentic learning experiences for their students. Obviously, this is a lot. This, the implementation of the learning model is not going to happen overnight. So that's why we've identified some, some big moves to implement the learning models. And the first one, big move number one, is school redesign.
A lot of people think a redesign means you're going to redesign the construction of your actual school site, but what it actually means is it's an opportunity to reimagine your school's mission and vision and the role that you play in the Framework for the Future.
School redesign is an exciting opportunity for a school to really look at what makes them uniquely themselves. So at North Broadway, science was always a really big focus. We had a science lab, we have an enormous garden, it's called the Secret Garden, nobody knew about it. There's a greenhouse, we have a lot of community partners near us that are connected to science or agriculture, and so between all of those pieces coming together, it really shined a light and we decided to be NV Ranch. And it's going to be environmental science school focused on sustainability, community, and really getting kids to explore outdoors and connect with nature.
Our students want voice and choice. They want to be engaged in their learning, and they want to get to know themselves. We got the chance to go and visit other school sites in other districts, and that would really help us hone in on exactly what we wanted our plans to be. We put a plan in place, and so that plan, in the short term, is going to consist of an advisory period every morning, where we are going to hone in on the Ria Sec theory, which is John Collins' six personality traits. And so students and staff and community are going to get to know their own strengths and interests based on this theory. It's been studied and proven that if we do things that we are interested in, we are happier and we are more successful. So that is what we're going to hone in on for the first two years.
We're going to take it slow, we're going to take it one piece at a time, and try to build out our systems over time.
What I want everyone to know is it's just not a plan that a principal and a few people put into place. It's truly a plan that brings you together, unites you, and it's exciting, and it's all about us.
Our staff should be totally energized. I mean, I see in the last month since we, of school, I saw more people try more things. We have a school song now.
Go give me a song, let the rock go.
We have lessons already planned, we've got teachers ordering outdoor supplies. They should be excited, and they should get going. Or as we say at North Broadway, take lead.
Take lead.
The idea is to have four to five schools every year go through this redesign process and really come out with something unique to them that matches their community, matches their environment, their skill sets. But ultimately, those joining them all together is, they're all utilizing the framework, has the framework for this, for this new redesign. I really want to make sure that everyone understands also that we are doing this together, but all, but we're going to take our time to get there. We need to understand that we don't need to fear this, but this is really what our next, as our district is evolving, this is truly our next step, naturally of where we are. Our district has a reputation for innovation, and as I see it, we're ready and ripe for this. Really, it's, it's giving you a position to be creative, to do these engaging lessons, to think outside the box. We know that when students are fully engaged and when they're fully taught the standards, and they're doing that in a very authentic way, that achievement will follow, because they're learning. And so again, you're all part of this incredible area that we're in, and I want to continue to, to applaud all the wonderful work that is happening, as you, as I'm sure you're all aware of it. We need to continue to highlight it, and we need to go take that next step. And again, that step's going to look different for every school, for every individual, but in the end, we're all moving in that direction, and that's very exciting.
And so last year, as mentioned, we were able to have our first cohort of schools participate in the school redesign process, and so we wanted to make sure that we were going to have an opportunity to have the teams be here and to present their, their ideas and give us an update of where they're at. So we'll go ahead and begin with LR Green.
My name is Crystal Underhill. I am the current principal of LR Green, and I'll let my two colleagues introduce themselves.
Hello, I am Dina Wood, and I am a third-grade teacher at LR Green.
And I'm Brian Woodward. I teach fourth grade at LR Green.
I guess they don't need the mic, huh? Okay, so we're going to start off with thinking about when you were little, when you were young, and when you were in elementary school.
Actually, could you talk in the mic, because we are streaming live?
Oh, sorry. Yes, of course. Okay, so, thinking back, when you were little, when you were in elementary school, what did you want to be when you grew up? Are you guys allowed to engage or no? Should I ask the audience?
Are we allowed to answer?
I don't know.
I'm with that guy. I wanted to be a baseball player.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else? We have baseball player? Okay.
Police officer.
Police officer.
Not without that.
How about a couple more? Anyone from the audience? A teacher. Awesome.
I actually wanted to be a teacher.
Awesome, and a teacher, okay. How many of you, just by a show of hands, felt that your elementary school years really tapped into that interest and prepared you for your future? Okay.
I did.
About two to three to four of you, okay.
I, I actually wanted to be a teacher, and I went to LR Green, and they made me want to be a teacher even more. They put me as a mentor student, so it did. It's probably disproving your point, but.
So LR Green was already doing the work. Okay, so, if you were to create a commercial, however, it might sound a little like this. And how do I click on that little light bulb from my clicker, Leonard?
As I'm in the midst of applying for residency right now.
Not this commercial.
I'm in a life cycle with my application.
When I grow up, I'm a fire all day.
I want to climb my way up to middle management, being replaced on the whim.
I have a brown nose.
I want to be a yes man, yes woman, yes sir, coming sir, anything for a raise sir.
When I grow up, I want to be underappreciated.
TK glass for doing the same job.
I want sunshine blown up my dress.
Sounds a little bit more like it. You don't have to answer that. Okay, so as we started collaborating with all of our stakeholders, we realized that our current state of a day at school consists of general assessments of learning, one classroom, one teacher, one subject per designated time period, and one way students demonstrate their learning. So, we came to this conclusion that we institutionalize the limit of learning potential. We heard just in this room, and the few of you that have answered the question of what you wanted to be when you were little, we heard a lot of varying answers, a lot of varying interests. And we say, as teachers and educators, that we want to tap into those interests, that we want to differentiate what, how we teach, and how they learn, and how they demonstrate their learning. But are we doing that? So, we continued to collaborate with all our stakeholders, and we came up with this process of co-constructing together what we really want to see, what we really feel is needed and valued, personalized learning experiences based on students' interests, integration of multiple subjects and standards, and real-world application to enrich their learning, both indoors and outdoors, and making sure there's metacognition. So, we began the process of our vision and mission, or should I say, Mrs. Frank began the process of vision and mission, and we took over, to be a school that creates learners who are curious and compassionate. And our mission is, at LR Green, we learn, inspire, and grow together. So to better understand their place in the world, every LR Green student will explore their strengths, interests, and values through a focus on the RIA SEC, which you heard from the beginning video, what RIA SEC is.
And RIA SEC, just real briefly, is not about the job. It's not about, I want to be a doctor, or I want to be a lawyer. It's more looking at your inner talents and your strengths, and trying to figure out what would fit those things. Real briefly, just to touch on each of those, the R is realistic, which is a hands-on kind of a person. Investigative would be the I, and that is your science or math person. Artistic, the A is artistic, which is creative, innovative kind of a person. S is social, which is a people person. The teachers typically are S people. Enterprising, are task-oriented or leaders, and the conventional person is somebody who likes order, likes structure in the day.
Okay, so, my teacher is teaching about weather and how it affects the environment, and I am the RIA SEC R, which stands for realistic. And I have chosen to showcase my learning by creating a diorama that shows how erosion
And I am the RIA SEC letter I, which stands for investigative, and I will showcase my learning by charting and analyzing weather patterns. Great learner agency there. So, now, it is time for our Green Works Hour. This is our one-hour week, where we will showcase our, through RIA SEC, our learning and how we impact our environment.
So as an A person, an artistic person, I will showcase my learning of how weather affects the environment by creating a poster, but I will need a friend who is a little more social to help me present my ideas.
And since I am the letter S, social, I will collaborate with you on this project.
As a letter E student, I might show my authentic assessment of competency by forming a cleanup crew to help our neighborhood park, Kit Carson Park, and we will go around and pick up trash before inclement weather comes, so that it does not clog up the drains and
So, and then the last one is the letter C, and I am part of our leadership team, and we are getting ready to go pick up the jackets left behind and not claimed around our school and donate them to our community partner, Inner Faith. So then, my day is done. That was fun. It was now time for my, it is now time for my teacher to expand our learning and work with their team to collaborate in order to meet our state standards and all of our many
So now we'll cover our big moves and what we're doing as a school and a leadership team. For the 2024-25 year this year, we're going to create a learner-centered schedule and align it to our vision. So our first step was that we implemented our 20-minute advisory time, and we often come together and reflect and try to refine what we're doing during that time. Step number two will be to draft and get a proposed schedule for the next school year, which will support learner-centered vision. Step three is that we'll bring the proposal schedule to the leadership, leadership team to assess its impact on the students, and then we will, step four will be to revise and based, based on all the input that the leadership team gives.
So for big move number two, we will build understanding of the RIA SEC and, during advisory time. So, our staff is currently learning the RIA SEC this trimester, and our next action step will be to introduce RIA SEC to our students during that advisory time. So in trimester one, what our staff is doing right now is doing the 20 minutes a day for advisory, and in the next trimester, we're going to guide our students through the RIA SEC letters during advisory time and teach them each letter individually, so they can find their interests.
Big move number three, teachers begin to embed the RIA SEC into the core curriculum. So step number one would be, in trimester three, the teachers are making connections to RIA SEC within the curriculum and with the students, and step number two would be that teachers and students are able to leverage the RIA SEC letters in assessment opportunities.
And then finally, our last big move, big move number four, each grade level is going to decide on a focus that is an environmental project to complete in the 25-26 school year. This could be anything from recycle to composting, and we are going to look at those and brainstorm those together and come up with ideas.
So here we just have some examples and some pictures of our teachers collaborating, as well as our students, starting to build community and collaborate through their interests. So you can see a lot of our younger kids and our older kids coming together, getting to know each other and themselves, and also starting to really getting to know each other and themselves, and also starting to really take advantage of all our outdoor learning spaces. You can see at the bottom, that's just a little snapshot of our master schedule where advisory time is embedded school-wide. Oh, and then I also linked our, the start of our planning doc for our collaboration through the RIASEC and what each grade level has, is starting to commit to for their grade level project. So this is a rollout. So this year for 24-25, you can see we're going to start in December with the letter R for realistic. So the teachers are going to begin teaching what realistic, a realistic learner is and what kind of jobs that equates to and how to, how that, you know, equates to the real world. And then we'll continue that with each letter until the end of the year. So by the end of this year, every teacher will have taught every single letter to our students. But then next year, we're going to start earlier, where it's going to start in September, the teaching of the RIASEC letters. And then you can see at the end of the year, our grade level project-based learning is going to happen, our Green Works Hour, once a week. For the next year, you could then see, we're going to teach them even quick, even faster. And then we're going to have more time for those project-based learning. So, in the following year, 27-28, so I'm taking you through kind of a five-year span here, we're going to use our outdoor spaces in our school and community for extended learning of California State Standards to be able to apply learning with hands-on, real-world experiences. And we already have some ideas and some of our grade levels kind of thinking about this, which Mr. Woodworth will.
We had a staff meeting last week. And so we were just trying to come up with what kind of ideas would each grade level like to do for their project. Fourth grade, we really love the idea of using the park to extend learning that's going on in the classroom, especially with math and science. So, we are going to try to create some math outdoor labs where we take the things that we're learning in the classroom, go to the park and have some math hands-on activities that will be very big problem-solving, critical-thinking type ideas that utilize all the things that we've learned in the classroom, but that they get to be outside and try to problem-solve and figure some stuff out, maybe with area and perimeter, or we could have some fraction-type activities. And for science, there's really great, wonderful evidence of erosion with the creek. There's some ecosystem evidence. So, we want to be able to use that. It's right across the street and none of us have ever really done any outdoor math labs before or science labs. So we thought, we really need to utilize what's right in our backyard. So that's what fourth grade is hopefully going to focus on and develop over the next year or two.
I don't know about you, but when I learned fractions, it wasn't outdoors. It was sitting at a desk, listening. Okay, so then the year after, we're going to use our indoor spaces in our school and community for extended learning of California State Standards to be able to apply learning with hands-on, real-world experiences. So once again, even if we're outdoors or indoors, we're going to tap into those students' interests, let them see that this is applicable to the real world and then transfers to your profession. So, we will plant the seeds of our ideas each year and watch them grow, knowing that not all crops take root and we may have to change our tractor's path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Or if you want to the next one?
Nice try, no, I'm just kidding.
I know.
We're running away.
No, great presentation. I was wondering, how do you, so when you present the RIASEC choices, how, how do you present that to the students? Like especially younger students to make them understand which letter they are?
Okay, so there are a lot of online resources on this. And we found a couple of great kid-friendly ones where, for example, it will ask a question and they have to rate themselves with a smiley face. And they color that smiley face. And then we get all of those, all that data. And, and then there is like a scale that we fill out that goes with that to show them, okay, this could be, you could be, you know, a realist or you could, or realistic, or you could be, so just all of the different letters and what they are. You could be social, so.
Okay, that's interesting.
And you can be more than one.
Okay, that was my other.
And it can change. Absolutely.
And so, is the goal to have them do all of their subjects or just do your project-based learning, the assessments according to their letters?
So really, we're starting to intertwine it and weave it into the core curriculum. So yes, actually, Mrs. Wood here actually just did a lesson with her students. I don't know if you want to talk about that, where, okay.
So, we were learning about, that's okay. We were learning about different people in, in history. And the students, we read an article and each one had a different paragraph. So the students got to pick which person in history interested them the most. And with that, they got to do further research. So through books, through articles, they had different, various, yeah, sources for them to look at. And, and then they read those and they got to choose how they wanted to present their learning. So if they wanted to present it through slides or if they wanted to present it through, some of them made a poster. Some of them wrote a paragraph and then used their iPad to create a news, like a newscast. So they videoed themselves presenting on their person. And then we presented it and then they all had to present it to the class. So, you know, just whatever their interest was. So if they enjoyed talking, most of them picked the one where they got to be a newscaster. Or if they enjoyed art, a lot of those ones picked the, the poster, so.
Very cool.
Just different, yeah.
Different ages.
And Mrs. Wood is part of the lesson redesign team. So they've been trying this throughout the past few months. So it's been pretty exciting.
I just have no questions. I just, I love everything about this for so many reasons. I love, you know, as somebody that builds parks and it's spent my entire career getting kids into parks. I love utilizing them, yeah, no kidding, utilizing the resources, our community around it. Gets them into the community, it lets them learn in different ways. And I'm like Principal Underhill, like I could not learn fractions. If you put me on a baseball field and say, "This is half and this is," I'd figure it out. So, so many things I love about this and the, the idea that we're doing things new and trying to do things. And then just personally, full disclosure, both these fine teachers taught my children, all four of them. And so, I just want to say thank you. I'm sure they represent the entire teaching community in EUSD. But on behalf of my family, these two taught all four of my children. I'm very grateful for that.
Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we'll invite up the principal of Limitless Learning Academy, Principal Michael Reichel, and the team.
I didn't mean to do it by myself. Good evening, how are you doing? So, I'm Michael Reichel and the principal of Limitless Learning Academy. And I am the RIASEC code. For me, I am investigative, artistic, and social.
I'm Christy Stringfield. I'm the fourth and fifth grade teacher at Limitless. And my RIASEC codes are artistic, social, and realistic.
I'm Rachel Bullis and I am a teacher at Limitless Learning Academy. And my RIASEC codes, I am artistic and forgetful. Yes, of course, social, but enterprising. All right. We'd like just to take a moment before we get into the bulk of our presentation to just clarify what our school is, since we're a little bit unique. We are the K-8 hybrid school that's located on the property of Delteos Middle School. Our core classes, our academic classes are held from eight to 12, online. After lunch, the students, there's a variety of things going on after lunch, depending on the day and students. We have mentor meetings, universal access time for enrichment and for intervention. We have our exploratory classes. And it's a good opportunity for students to come in person and have that socialization with their peers and their teachers. If students aren't able to come in person, we offer all of those things online during that time. We're also very lucky to have, be part of the enrichment wheel. So on Thursdays for a few hours, our students get to have art and STEM and music while we're afforded the opportunity to work in our learning communities. The types of students that would come to us, it's a variety of reasons. So we have students with physical health challenges, perhaps they themselves or family members at home that make it difficult for them to be in person for regular attendance. Neurodivergent learners, we offer stability and security. They have the stability and security and supports of their home environment while we offer them their education. Many students with social emotional learning, social emotional considerations that distance learning and small in-person groups are more beneficial for. Many parents who would really like to homeschool, but they appreciate the curriculum and the classroom teacher and the record-keeping that LLA provides. Students who experience frequent changes in geography, perhaps they're rotating between several, two, three residents during a week. And that can also impact their attendance. Or there's learning, learning, sorry, housing instability. And we give them a, an environment and a peer group that doesn't change. And I can tell you firsthand, it's really a lovely thing to see how supportive these students are and to see the things that they might be going through on the outside. And then they have this secure environment for school. Of course, we have the behavioral presentations that might make it challenging for, on many levels, for students to be on campus. And this sometimes might be the last opportunity the district has to provide some type of intervention for the student before they may be placed in another type of learning environment. And we've had great success with some of those students as well. So all of that said, we're just very grateful that our district has provided this school for these students and that we're able to serve these families. So our mission then is to empower these students and support these very diverse learners. Foster their independence through the flexibility of virtual and hybrid education based on the pillars of LLA that you'll hear about. Our vision is to, is empowering creative, self-driven learners and unleash their limitless potential and make a meaningful impact, to make a meaningful impact on an ever-changing world. And our slogan is empowering minds, unleashing potential, and building futures. And we really do believe and teach to those.
So as you all know from Dr. Abara's talk in the video, we engaged with all the constituents of our school community, many meetings, empathy-building, part of the design process that the Learner Center Collaborative provided training for, that we engaged our families, we brought them in. We also had every staff meeting. We were taking the data, we were getting more data from them and continued to try to take that data and redefine what it is that was the real need, the real desire, just like it was described in the video. And you can see up there how many different occasions we did that. And so from the empathy-building process, which is an ongoing one, again, from students as the starting point, and then moving into parents, family, and community members and staff, these were some of the main themes that came out of it. Again, we were happy to see that some of the things that we've driven to emphasize were recognized and also desired. Innovative, the idea that they felt more connected, even though it's a virtual format, they felt more connected at school and more nurtured and cared for and more individualized, as you see in the larger. But we did notice some interesting questions to the surveys from some of the family members about the identity. They were still a little bit confused, as many people are, without the exposure to it. Is this, someone even said, "Is it a charter or religious?" They weren't even sure, you know, what, what our purpose or what our origin is. So that became kind of a defining moment for us to try to really make that clear through this process. And so through the whole process, we were able to tour some really amazing schools through the Collaborative's network. And what we noticed most, what was most impressive to us as our school, for what we want to do with, mostly came from El Cajon Valley and their implementation, just like LR Green of, of the RIASEC and the World of Work. But one of the things, the first one, if you see that disruption blob, was a competency-based model. So that the school itself be, you know, taking the standards and the curriculum, but also taking our own assessment of data and our teaching cycles and realizing that we want to create our own competencies and make those very clear for our students, even to what we'll describe later as something that's very explicit, even on our individual goal-setting tool that you'll be seeing, that what are our competencies that we want to make sure that our families and students know that they are trying to develop. And they can be beyond the standards in the sense that, you know, it could be using the Google Suite to make presentations. Could be a competency that we want to choose is important, or the digital portfolio. So that was something that we really decided, we want to include that competency-based model. We really wanted to take on the RIASEC, similar to what you heard before. And then we were really impressed by the World of Work. Because we knew that students had, had spent a lot of time learning about themselves. And then from there, a trajectory of where they could possibly learn about all the plethora of diverse job specializations that exist in the world today that they would never be able to learn about otherwise and, and have a complexity of, as we go along. So we started to get inspired by the World of Work in action. And finally, the digital portfolios that we saw became a big goal of ours, that we wanted our students to learn to develop those as a way, again, of individual, personalized, and also an authentic way to demonstrate your learning about yourself and about what we're doing in school. Now?
So we took what we learned from those learning walks and we came up with a few key takeaways that we developed. Our first was our pillars of the LLA way. What we, the way that we look at this is that we're building on the foundation of the learner profile. The ESCD does, EUSD's learner profile. But we have come up with pillars of what we believe the students who go through kindergarten through eighth grade, or maybe just a portion of sixth grade, will learn as they're at Limitless. And that's our pillars of, we understand the world, we embrace challenges, we express who we are with confidence, we develop tools for life, and we explore our own pathways. And these are the different elements of each of those that we're using to embed in every lesson, in every bit of the curriculum that we can. So we're very consciously trying to take a look at our lessons and see if I'm learning a new math concept, I'm embracing challenges. And kids are able to take on that challenge of learning a new math concept. And when they're able to demonstrate that and they can communicate that to somebody else, then they're expressing who they are with confidence. So we're trying very consciously to put all of those pillars into our lessons that we're teaching. The World of Work was the second piece. We really loved the World of Work program and how it not only taught kids to find out what their areas of interests are, what they're good at, but where that could lead them in the future into a career. They're exploring their own pathways in that way. And again, this year, we are trying to embed that into all of the lessons. For example, in a lesson that I started yesterday, the students are taking on the roles in a project of either being a lead scientist or a field researcher or a communications officer as they're investigating a unit on natural disasters. So they're, we're trying to take those careers and teach them about those careers that they could have even in their roles in the classroom. The digital portfolios was the final piece that we took away from that. The digital portfolios, we thought, was a really great piece for them to collect evidence of how they are reaching each of those pillars. So if they have, I had a student, for example, who did a coding challenge and he came up with a code for a program on something. And he said, "You know what, I think I can use this for 'We Embrace Challenges.'" And he took a picture of his work that he did and wrote up a little thing for it and put it into his digital portfolio. And because this is something that is now going to carry through, as he- And because this is something that is now going to carry through as he continues each grade level, he doesn't start a whole new portfolio, it just gets added to this digital one, he can reflect back on what he did in fifth grade when he's in eighth grade and see his growth and progress in each of these pillars.
So, a day in the life. I read the news today, oh boy. So I'm a student at LLA, and, you know, I have seen so much difference in my experience here than other experiences. And one of the things that I really love is, it's such a tight community, a small learning community as a whole, but in my grade-level classes, we have morning meetings, you know, there are kind of advisory sessions, and those are the most fun, because a lot of times, they have us get up and Ms. Bolis had us do this extension thing where we were all taking yarn and showing connection, and I had so much fun learning how to cooperate with everybody else, you know? And, you know, there's also times when I just, with the teacher and my mentor meetings, where we sit together and talk about where I need to go next, you know, and we learn together how I learn best, you know? And there's another aspect, you know, like, in the past, everybody was always doing everything together, and we always had to, you know, kind of fall in the line and conform, but in this system, I get a lot of choice about how I'm going to, in asynchronous work, what work I'm going to start on, what order I'm going to do it in, even what time, if I have to do something else, I can plan on doing it later, if I have to go to my theater class first, you know? And I also feel like I can choose and come up with a lot of different options on the internet, you know, for how I'm going to demonstrate my learning to the teacher. And sometimes, when I don't feel like talking in front of the class, the teacher also gives me the choice, I can go off for a second and create a video, and then I can play the video of my speech, and it's so much easier for me, you know? And I love how, I was in Ms. Bolis and Ms. Perfect's class, and they talk about this thing called, what's it called, inter, what was it called? Interdisciplinary. And, and what we learned, for example, we were learning about the tundra and some of the environmental impacts, but then we were reading a book in Ms. Bolis's language arts class that was about a child that was surviving there and some different aspects of their character, and it all made sense to me. It all made sense about the connection there. Thank you. And in terms of the portfolios, I'm really seeing a real record of how I've grown, as Ms. Stringfield just explained, and I'm able to reflect and make my own goals using the tools. So I can really look and make my own notes every time I meet with my teacher during the mentor meeting. And then the other thing that's been really great with the career exploration is, we've actually been connecting with other people through the online, we had a career talk with somebody online that came to our class. We also had an example, we were doing a, one of the students in my class came up with an idea to donate to a local charity by doing some crochet work. And so I just felt like it was, it was just such an interesting and creative way to do things. And finally, I love the kinds of curriculum they've introduced in resources, they've introduced the AI, how to use that as a real tool, but with my human ingenuity, using it properly, and they have all these great, like, they have formative where I can work online and have my work stack, that gives me the choice, and the teacher can see what we're doing, and we can turn it in. We have Decimos for math. It's just, it's better than some of the paper stuff I did in the other schools.
So just to go back over our big moves that we're going to be making in our transformation, our first big move is that full integration of the LLA, LLA, LLA way in classroom lessons, that's so hard to say, every time I try to say it, using our pillars and implementing those in all of our classrooms. We have already started doing that, we have already started meeting as a staff and sharing ideas with each other. We're hoping to continue to work on putting together a toolkit of ways that we can do that even better. Big move number two is that career exploration in kindergarten through fifth-grade classrooms this year. We're a K-8 school, but we started with the World of Work in K-5 to begin with, and then it will move up the grade levels next year. For fourth through eighth grade, implementing those progressive student portfolios, the digital portfolios in fourth through eighth grade, and then next year, we will start moving that down. Fostering structures for teacher collaboration, which we're already doing, but we want to just continue to work together. We're a very small staff, we're making sure that we are all sharing ideas together on our Thursdays when we're collaborating together. Enhancing the communication plan for Limitless Vision of Identity. We want to make sure that we update our website, that we are having meetings with stakeholders to let them know who we are and what we stand for. And then for our five-year outlook, next year, we're hoping to bring the World of Work up to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and bring the digital portfolios down into third grade next year, and then hopefully to do something with the second grade the following year. We wanted to introduce student-led conferences next year. We actually already did that this year. We decided we were ready for it. So when we had student conferences, all fourth through eighth graders did student-led conferences, and they were awesome. So we were really pleased with that. Next year, we'd like to have a student ambassador program for peer mentoring and leadership, where our older students can start mentoring some of our younger students. We want to continue rolling things up and down so that eventually, over the next three years, all of our plans are kindergarten through eighth grade. Our goal at the end of all of this is, in five years, our hope is that because we are such a unique school, and there's not a whole lot of models out there, we want to be the model for digital learning. We want to get rid of that bad rep, because our program is awesome, our students love being there, our parents love being there, we love being there. We want to show the entire nation what a good model is for digital learning, because I think we've got it. We've got a good foundation, and we can make it even better.
And we just wanted to share that we, in addition to getting the conferences on a roll, we have, our digital portfolios have already been rolled out for fourth through eighth grade. Students are collecting artifacts and adding to those portfolios. All students, third through eighth, have taken the RIASEC, and those lessons are being embedded in their interdisciplinary lessons. And we have a model of goal-setting in a way that we keep our goals for fourth through eighth grade, SMART goals for each trimester, and then weekly goals, little steps to get us to those larger trimester goals. And so fourth through eighth grade, they're all doing this each week. We start on Monday with the small step goals, and then on Fridays, we have time to review our week, and they reflect on it and see how they've done. And then, as Christie said, we have our student-led conferences, fourth through eighth grade, and we've been really explicit with our students what we're doing, and they're able to articulate that to their parents alongside of us during those conferences.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I was just going to comment, I really like your pillars. I think your, the titles for the pillars are very clear and concise and easy to understand, and I liked how you worked that out. And like how you're making the connection to the World of Work, I think that's important. I think that's our job, is to provide the community with good citizens, and they need to be starting to think about how are they going to contribute to this community, and maybe what their employment's going to be, and how they can see school as the tool to get them where they want to be. So it was very nice, and I like how you have the students self-reflect weekly on what they're doing, which is a good progress monitoring. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we'll invite up the team from Mission Middle School.
Good evening, norm members, Dr. Ibarra and cabinet members. To my right, Mr. Bo Thomas. To my other right, Mr. White and Ms. Neil and Ms. Lem, and I'm Mr. Karosk, and we are just a few of the proud members of Mission Middle School. So tonight, we have the pleasure of sharing with you our studio labs, our mission for our future for the, a framework for the future. So we'll get started with Mr. Thomas.
Okay, so one thing that struck me in listening to Dr. Ibarra on the video is, first of all, I think we knocked it out of the park. I think we knocked it out of the park, I think we hit all that stuff. But I also, it dawned on me that you all, thank you to whoever had a hand in putting this in motion, because you created the learning experience for the adults on the campus that we want for our kids. We're taking ownership, we have the enthusiasm. We're just, you know, stepping back and saying, yeah, what do our kids need? What do we want for them? So I think that's powerful. Okay, so at Mission, our vision, we want students to be confident, productive members of the community. That's our goal. We want students to discover themselves, explore their interests, and experiment with their future. So this vision and mission came from all the things that we've already talked about and heard, right? The framework from the future, listening to students, listening to staff members, listening to parents, and then thinking about, okay, at Mission, what's best for our kids? So, the vision, we want students to be confident. So if students are confident, they're just going to be happier, right? They're going to, they're going to be more prepared for whatever they get into. If they are productive members of their community, they're going to feel valued, and they're going to feel like they're contributing to the people around them. With our vision, sorry, our mission, if they discover who they are, okay, so we have three layers here. We want students to discover who they are. We then want them to look into their interests and take that information that they know about themselves, and then look into what their interests are, what their talents are. And then, yeah. So our three-year plan is, in sixth grade, they're going to spend time discovering who they are in studio labs. Yeah. And seventh grade, they're going to look into their interests. So they're going to take this knowledge that they have about themselves, and now they're going to look at, okay, what are my talents, what am I interested in? And then eighth grade, they're going to look at, okay, what, I know myself a little better, I know my talents, I know my interests, now where do I fit in the world? Okay? So in my 24 years, we've never done this for students. They've never had that, we've never sent them to high school with a clear understanding of who they are, what their interests are, giving them the time and space to explore that stuff, and then think about what possibly could that mean for my future? Is it a career? Am I going to be an entrepreneur? Do I have to go to college for this? Whatever. So I think that's a very powerful path.
So our five-year plan includes an end-of-the-year celebration for the first cohort to complete the first, the three-year mission experience. So our sixth graders this year, by the time they complete all three years at Mission, we want to have a celebration of how far they've come from starting today and going into the future. We're going to use a greater use of design thinking throughout the school, not just in our studio labs classes, but also a school-wide shift towards grade-level themes, design thinking process, and student-led culture. We are celebrating right now, tonight, some early successes. And we launched this year our sixth-grade class of studio labs, so almost every sixth grader on our campus is participating in our studio labs experience. We've got a lot of energy and optimism, not only from our team, but also from our entire staff. We've made lots of invitations to staff to come and see what's happening, and in, also incorporating how they can use these things in their own classroom. We're focused on design thinking, we're focused on student-led learning, it's taking root throughout our school, and we have a lot of interest from our staff. We definitely have a strong team here with us tonight, as well as the team members who participated in our original redesign plan. Our students are really enjoying the process. Our students are showing a joy and a collaboration, and the engagement and joy in our classrooms is palpable. When you come into a classroom at Mission and students are wanting to show you what they've done or what's in process, it's just a wonderful thing to see. Our non-studio labs teachers have definitely been embracing the shift, and we are trying to bring them along in the process, and slowly but surely, the enthusiasm is spreading. So these are a few of our pictures of learning that's happened so far. As the first studio labs teachers, we've come into a routine of what we call creative actions on Mondays. So we spend a little time learning how to build and develop our creative thinking. This might be something like a drawing project, where they do something and realize, oh, now we're going to put a slash through it. Okay, there's a slash through your drawing, now what else can you do with that slash? Okay, my duck has a slash through it, I'm going to put my duck in a boat. And so they sketch a little boat underneath their duck. And they go through creative process and creative routines like this, so that they can expand and not be afraid to make mistakes, and not be afraid to try new things and get into it. On several days each week, we dedicate to student-driven projects, using the steps of the design process. We used the design process to create posters for the EUSD Attendance Challenge recently, and students are currently working in teams to develop their own sport or game based on the design process that they're going to share with their friends and their community. We also have, on Thursdays, we're incorporating the book in the upper right corner, it's called Mexikid. It is a multi-award-winning graphic memoir that serves as one point of inspiration for our students' own exploration of self. You can see some of our students doing their catapult, quick design, and another set of students building a set design model box. Here's a few more pictures of the creative things our students are doing. Using limited materials, such as those in the Ziploc bag at the top, students are coming up with new and innovative ways to build and create things. This is one of our Attendance Challenge posters, from draft to final product, and in the lower left is a mind map, which students are using to brainstorm and build on their ideas. Students complete a process slide each day to share what they've worked on and reflect on any progress they've made, and reflection and feedback is built into the entire process. Students are going to connect not only with themselves, but also with their families and their communities through the rest of this year, and they'll present artifacts from their learning to their community at an end-of-the-year celebration.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So one of the things that we, that I've been learning when I walk into classrooms here is just, there has been a huge shift on the attitude of our students. And this is something that we've been focusing on, and this is something that, as the team developed the studio labs, that was our hope, for us to increase that motivation piece and also connectedness with our students. And so this year, thanks to our district and our cabinet members and Dr. Ibarra, we were very blessed to receive the Grant for Community School Specialist, which it came at a perfect time, because as we're focusing on really discovering and helping students who they are, we also need to also engage with our community. And so we are, what we're doing right now is that we are creating this journey map, and one of the focuses that we're also instilling with studio labs is to blend personalized learning and the community school engagement. And the way we're going to do that is to create some goals from now in January, and then in February, of course, you know, we're going to be looking into that. By now in January, all stakeholders and team members will understand that intersection, you know, between the redesigned model and also our community schools, what they focus on climate and culture. And the reason why we chose climate and culture is because looking at our California Healthy Kids Survey, that was one of the trends, actually, three trends that we saw, which is being connected, you know, was very low, motivation was also very low, and then participation. So we thought- So we thought blending that and helping our community, our parents understand that, goes really well with students understanding who they are. So that's, that's one of the focuses that we have. And also how, having teachers, you know, implementing design thinking in the classrooms. And we, we've been doing that. Our team has been meeting with teachers. Today was another meeting where they met, and they've been talking about those, those next steps. And the steps that we're going to be taking to achieve this goal is to create posters, you know, visible artifacts to communicate our mission and vision across, you know, our campus and also our community. One of the things that we have, and this happens, you know, every third Thursday, is our food distribution. So our Community School Specialist, with the support of our parent liaison, they're creating pamphlets that every family will be receiving as their ticket basket. And the intent for that is for them to start understanding more about our redesigned model on Mission Middle School, and how the community school, you know, resources is going to blend our, you know, our connectedness with what we're doing at school. We're also going to be implementing, not only the lessons, but also meeting with our teachers, students, and parents during our coffee with the principal, and really reflect and also collaborate on the next steps, you know, for, for future plans, starting February all the way through June, you know, because remember, this is a five-year plan. And, and some of the examples that we have been already doing is, we've been inviting panels to come into the school, and as you can see, we have students engage in open dialogue with our community panels members to increase motivation in regards to school participation. So we've been, we've been getting a lot of, well, we've been calling, you know, high school students and really present to our students and talk to them. And then, as you can see there, students are taking notes, they're asking questions, and really understanding more of who they are. And this also transpires, I mean, transfers into our ELP services. So it's not just during the school hours, but also after school as well. We have students participating in our community school advisory committees, and this is part of them taking a part in the decision-making of our budget, and how we want to spend the money, and also, you know, getting those resources that is going to help them and also their parents as well. And then you also see parents being involved in our presentations, where they're learning more about what the community school systems entail and, you know, what we want to do next. And we are also inviting Dr. Hector Mesa and Medium Leninger to our site, starting in January, and we're going to have different sessions for our community, where they're going to be focusing on helping our parents understand more about the mental health and wellbeing of our students. And we're hoping that, you know, those, you know, workshops can increase our connectedness and also help us motivate our students to come to school every day, because as, as we all know, every day counts. And so we're also using our $15,000, which is, that's the budget that we're putting right now. It's a blend between Title I and our community school budget, in terms of, not only for our presenters, but also bringing resources to increase what the team is doing already in the classrooms, and also other teachers.
Okay, so the enthusiasm, the enthusiasm just keeps growing. I make it, every time we reach out to teachers and we let them kind of dip their toes where they're ready to dip their toes, whatever depth, and they understand that they're in control and it's not scary, I think this enthusiasm just keeps growing, right? I know personally, I've been caught up in it, just very motivated. I'm excited to come to school, I'm excited to be a teacher. And seeing what the students are doing, right, is energizing as well. I know they're having a good time, and they're learning, and they're learning these skills and how to problem-solve. So I wanted to make sure that what I was seeing and what I was feeling was what the students were thinking as well. So I stopped, and I asked some students, and that's what you're seeing on the screen there. What, what do you think? How do you think this process is going? How do you think this benefits students? And these are the things that they said. So if you just want to take a little bit and read those. One that really struck me was Esmeralda. So this is a special ed student. I had her last year as well. She's, she feels very comfortable in this process, in the room. She embraces mistakes, because she knows that it's a learning process. She's not scared to make mistakes, she's not embarrassed about making mistakes, and I think that's the attitude that we want spreading throughout the whole school.
And before we finish, let me add something else that is also very important. You know, our community school specialists and our parent liaison will be also doing, they're going to be coordinating some visits through our apartment complexes and homes with the objective of engaging our community members and creating, not only having a in-house within that community, but also creating open houses where we can bring more family members into our school, and really understand the process, and also what the students are doing as well. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your support, and we're very excited, and I want to also thank the team for their dedication and hard work, and so thank you for that. And that's about it.
So Mr. Carrasco, not a question, but a comment. I just want to thank you and your staff, obviously, for this idea of, of really having kids look inward at, what am I doing here? What are my goals in life? What are my dreams? What can I do to reach those dreams? I really believe that once a student has that figured out, once they have a purpose in school, everything else becomes easy, right? But, but as you say, so many students walk out of middle school without a distinct plan, or at least an idea of a plan. And just the idea of the plan, although it can change as many times as you want, is so important. So thank you for that element of this redesign.
And we invite you, we have open houses every morning, so you're welcome to visit Mission Middle School and see the work on hand. Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment, Mr. Thomas. I was just recently at Mission Middle School for a site visit, and I want to echo what I saw, exactly that, that enthusiasm. I was in core content classes, and I had many students coming up to me and saying, can I show you what I've done? What I'm making? What I'm creating? That's powerful. So thank you. And I see it. Core content classes, it's spreading like wildfire. So thank you to the team. Guys are doing amazing work. Thank you.
All right, and next up, we'll invite up the team from Hidden Valley.
What? Oh, all right. Is it all right if we take a five-minute break just before? Five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Just kidding.
Yeah, really. And then get out of the way. Yeah, well, as with me, too. Okay, so we're back, and we're ready to begin. Thank you.
Outstanding. Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Brianna Norton. I'm the principal of Hidden Valley Middle School. I am going to have the amazing Micro School team introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Natalie Laurel. I teach science.
I'm Nicole Bolger. I teach math.
Seventh grade math, sorry.
I'm Kelsey Keen. I'm a special education teacher.
I'm Steve Larson. I teach seventh grade English Language Arts.
So we are leaders of Escondido. And before we even dive into any of the information, the ques, bless you. The question that I would say we get asked a lot is, what exactly is the Micro School? So I think I'd like to kind of speak to that for a moment, just to ensure that we have a common understanding and that we're calibrated in exactly what that is. You'll have to bear with me, because I tend to use sports to explain things, having come from a sport background. I liken it to when we teach kids how to shoot a basketball. You can teach kids how to shoot it on the side of their head, or you can teach them how to shoot it in the front of their face. Essentially, you're talking about approach. We're talking about how do we do redesign in a different way? At Hidden Valley, we've had the opportunity, working with LCC, Getting Smart, and our fabulous district office, in creating a Micro School that allows us to essentially be innovative at a smaller scale. When you're doing redesign, sometimes you take the approach of the entire school and implementing all together. What we are doing, again, at Hidden Valley, is taking a select group of teachers, and at Hidden Valley, we have 66% of our seventh-grade students that are participating in this Micro School. Another way to look at our Micro School is to call it an innovation lab. The point of the Micro School is not only to have our awesome teachers be able to pilot and try new things, it's not just now, it is, sorry about that, they will be able to do this moving forward. So even when our redesign is completed, you have an innovation lab on your campus, where you are consistently trying new things all the time. Because our teachers are the experts, they understand what our students need, and it allows them to respond to our students' needs, whether academic, social, emotional, or behavioral, in a timely manner. So that is essentially what our Micro School is. I mentioned that 66% of our seventh-grade students are involved. While we're going through this presentation, I think it's also important to understand we will talk about the Micro School, but we will also talk about the changes that are happening across the campus as well. So we kind of ebb and flow through two different processes that are occurring simultaneously on our campus. I will not spend a lot of time. We know our framework. We know that we're grounded in the learner profile, we're grounded in the outcomes. One of the things that our team is really focusing on, when we started this, and this was for our whole school, not just our Micro School, was that we wanted to ensure that our school structures were intentionally designed to support learner-centered practices. When you look at this diagram right here, this is going to be highlighted, whether we're talking about small learning communities, we're talking about a clear identity, all of these will be spoken about, whether directly or indirectly, through this presentation. So HVMS Reimagined, we are currently working as an entire school at updating our mission and our values, but we will get to that once we do our mascot. But as an entire school, we had an opportunity to update our vision. So our vision at Hidden Valley Middle School, you can all see that on the wonderful slide, I will read it, though. "We envision a community where our students are empowered to take ownership of their academic and personal growth, cultivate meaningful relationships, and embrace active citizenship to create a positive impact on our community." So our Micro School started very, very quickly. We actually, and I think about Dr. Philia when she came to visit, and she's like, we would love for you guys to be a Micro School. I think that was in like February or January of last year. So we were approached in January or February, our team did not begin actual developing until approximately April. So you figure, April, May, I don't really count June, but then in August, our team was able to come in and develop, create unit plans, create lessons, and do different things in order to ensure that on the first day of this school year, they were off and running. I have to say, that's a lot of work for teachers to do in a very short amount of time. I am very impressed at what they have come up with thus far. I will allow them to speak to that. I am actually going to turn it over to Steve Larson.
Thank you, Dr. Norton. So a wise person once said, "The future's not ours to see, but ours to create." And we tried to do both, right here with this slide, to have a one-stop shop. This is our vision, where we want to be and where we will be at 2029, when we really get this thing going here. Exciting for me, as an educator, I've been doing this for 20 years, and the shift, it's daunting, it's exciting, but it's very exciting. It's a very exciting shift, where we go from the school-centered approach, where we're, as the educators, driving the curriculum, we're telling, basically, we are telling students what to learn and how to do it. And this shift going over to the learning centered, learner-centered approach, where learners work at their pace, getting the support that they need through, it could be whole class, it could be small group, it could be one-on-one instruction, and learners have that agency. They're able to goal-set. They're able to reflect, a big part of this, the decision-making, and the voice and choice in their learning as well. Some of the highlights of this on, thank you, we have the, we start off with the interdisciplinary connections, the, across the content areas, the project-based learning across all of the core subjects. A wellness elective focused on skill-building that will lead to community-connected PBL, or Genius Hour by the end of this year. Portfolios that, that focus on goal-setting, reflection, and self-assessment aligned with the EUSD learning profile. And, which is also involved in that is student-led conferences, which is yet another shift, I think, for us as well. We're used to leading all the conferences, and now we can make that shift and have students lead that conference, defend their learning, show us their learning. Really exciting. Opening, so we have our advisory at the beginning of school, the opening meeting. We also have our, the Wellness Elective. Both of those things, where we provide opportunities for meaningful goal-setting, reflection, and a big part of our program is the social-emotional piece to this. Making sure our students are ready to be learners and ready to focus, that mind-body-spirit connection. And also, too, identity and focus on the empowered learner, the aligning with the EUSD learner profile.
So this is our Micro School innovation timeline for this year. We do have it as a working document, so obviously, it will change over time. We've been adding things to it. That is really small. But we looked at the learner profile and decided we wanted to have four main outcomes for this year, the first being redefining student assessment practices, with a lot of competency-based grading practices, student portfolios that are starting off as a hard copy portfolio, where they use a binder, and we're transitioning to a digital portfolio starting next trimester. We started with our student-led conferences this year, tried it out, figured out what was working, what was not working, and are working on plans for next year and improving those student-led conferences. We are also going to have a lot of student exhibitions with, like, the Mascot Mania. We're doing a Hidden Figures Film Festival later in the year. And then with outcome number two, we're looking at implementing authentic learning experiences with the students, having many cross-curricular PBLs. We are constantly working with each other in every single lesson that we do. How can we double-dip that concept in science, in ELA, in math, and in history? Ms. Bolger and Ms. Thomas recently did a project where the kids traveled and created a travel experience, where they had to look at a country that they were traveling to, they had to convert money, they had to plan excursions, and then they, in history, were able to look at maps and actually map out their trip and plan their different excursions that they went to. In science, we looked at different types of maps, so they were understanding the different types of maps that they were using in each of those assignments. For outcome number three, we're looking at developing the learner profile. We do a lot of restorative practices with circles embedded in most of our lessons, not just in advisory in the morning and wellness at the end of the day, which bookends our day, so we have those same groups of kids that we see in the morning and in the afternoon, which has been amazing. Those kids are very Those kids are very comfortable with us. We get to see them three times a day, in the morning, in our content, and then again in wellness. So we develop these really great relationships with them, where they are comfortable making mistakes, they're comfortable asking questions, where we're able to have one-on-one meetings with the kids to talk about the goals, where they set goals every Monday. We revisit those goals every single day at the end of the day, and then on Friday, they reflect on the week and look at if they accomplish that goal or not. We have embedded Maslow's hierarchy of needs into those goals, and the students have become very well-versed in all of those hierarchies of needs, and they're able to identify what kind of goal, what need their goal is meeting, and if their goals are meeting deficient needs, or if they're meeting their growth needs. And of course, we're always trying to get them to work towards the top of that pyramid. For our outcome number four, we're working at building a community and a culture. Every Friday, we have community building within our wellness class, where the kids do activities to get to know each other a little bit better, they get to know their teacher a little bit better. And then once a month, all of us get together during seventh period and have all of the students, all hundred and fifty of them, hundred and forty-eight of them, we go outside and do a fun activity together. So they might do an escape room. We had a day where we had over a hundred kids out there playing Simon Says, after they spent a whole week learning about listening skills and how to be a better listener, and that was really fun to see. And we added a link to the bottom where you can see more details on each of these assignments and the different things that we're doing. Trimester one has been very successful. We're really looking forward to trimester two and some of the things that we have planned for trimester three. One of the main things that we're looking at that's coming up is our Mascot Mania project.
So right now, we are kind of reaching the tail end of our Mascot Mania project. The students were asked to think about values that they think are important to them, their school, their school community, and then thinking of a new mascot that could help embody some of those values. So the students were working in small groups to collaborate. They were picking three values that they thought were most important and explaining how they tied into their mascot, and then into the school community and the larger community. They kind of had free rein a little bit to pick some of those mascots, but we did encourage them to think about our community in Escondido and some of those things they might want to see represented. And then the students got to create a multimedia presentation, so some students used Canva, Google Slides. They really got to, some of them create that mascot. We had some very interested in graphic design students, so it's been really wonderful to see them how to problem-solve, work together to come up with narrowing down those three values, narrowing down their mascot, and then eventually presenting it to the class and then the micro school as a whole. So building a lot of those communication collaboration skills as well.
In addition to the micro school doing the Mascot Mania project, the entire school is taking this project on. So it is not just us teachers who are having our students pick a mascot. Every single grade level is doing this project in one shape, one way, shape or form. And by the end of November, we will have at least three different mascot representations from each grade level. Those then will go out to not just our stakeholders of our students, but also all of the community that is impacted by our school, parents included, and they will be able to vote on the mascot that they want to see representing Hidden Valley Middle School. So by the time the students come back from winter break, we should have a new mascot, and the students and our community will have been directly involved in creating that mascot.
Okay, so the, it was, what was, oh, so sorry, sorry. School-wide focus, twenty. All right. So you can go to the next slide. So in the micro school, we have been focusing on the PBL, focusing on the PBL and authentic learning opportunities, as Ms. Laurel had pointed out. Also, we stated from before, our micro school has been seen as an innovation lab. Many of the projects and procedures are, we're piloting or vetting it for the rest of the campus. So we try it out, and then we get, we let them, you know, we try it before they have to implement it. For example, one of the things we tackled over the summer was a project that would revamp our mascot, as Ms. Laurel had said. We called it Mascot Mania. In the micro school, we had our students do a more in-depth project. However, a more time-sensitive version was created for the rest of the school, so they could also participate in the process of creating and voting for our new mascot. The next thing was, as we revitalize our mascot, it also became essential that we reinforced our school core values and mission. This is something that we've worked on this year also. In addition to, to ensure that our teachers were equipped to implement the new initiatives, more professional development has also been offered, that is like standard-based driven, with a focus on problem-based learning and English language learners in January of two thousand, or twenty twenty-five. Furthermore, our professional development and projects were deliberately aligned closely to our district's learner profile, school vision, and eventually the leaders of Escondido theme. This ensures that our teachers will be empowered to move towards exploring a transition to competency-based grading in spring.
Okay. So, we're starting to kind of glom on a little bit to this idea when we think of middle school like as a holding place. It's actually a molding place. And when you look at middle school, they are the bridge from elementary, and they are the bridge to high school. And I think oftentimes, our middle schoolers are overlooked, and it's just kind of like, "Oh, it's just middle school, it's not a big deal." And that is absolutely incorrect. Middle schoolers have the ability to be talented beyond what we even realize. And when we take the time to listen to our students, and we take the time to implement things that they are talking about, provide them the opportunity to have voice and choice, they will demonstrate their abilities beyond anything we ever thought they would be able to. So it's not just a time for our kiddos to get through, it is a time for them to thrive. And it is our responsibility, when they go to high school, to have them prepared and to be successful for that next journey. I'm going to skip the "what drives us" for time's sake. What I will ask or go over is, this is our current schedule, so I don't know about you, I like to have a visual to help understand where we're at. This is not just our micro school, this is currently the schedule that our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are taking. This is a different schedule than before. So sixth grade, our focus is providing support for our students transitioning to middle school. We have a hundred percent of strategic small group based on eye-ready and common reading data. So we have a personalized learning period that is attached to our ELA. We also are using that strategically to help with intervention or extension, so that is built into the school day. They also have, all of our sixth graders have one elective. In seventh grade, where we are piloting again with the micro school, we have strategic small group happening at approximately fifty percent. The, micro school has a single ELA period, so they have one English period. So in the micro school, their second elective is the wellness course at the end of the day. For the students that are not doing the micro school, they are double-blocked, ELA, and the personalized learning period. They still have an elective. So it says fifty percent of students take one elective, and fifty percent of our students take electives. All micro school students take wellness. So we are piloting within piloting. We want to see the data that comes out of this based on test scores. We are piloting in sixth grade to see the data that comes out with our kids taking an ELA with a personalized learning. In eighth grade, the focus is to prepare our kids for high school. All of our eighth graders are currently taking two electives. We're piloting to see what the data says. Based on the data, we will respond to the needs of our kids. Three-year plan. There's a lot up there. I know you guys can read a lot of this information, but year one, which is right now, we have the micro school launch, we are doing a mascot change, we are doing a PBL pilot, competency-based grading, and community engagement. Year two, we will continue to scale the micro school and expand PBL and electives. I think it's important to mention, we now have on the books for our electives, financial literacy, animation, culinary that we have brought, and I can't tell you how awesome and amazing. Thank you to the ELOP program, because that's where we started it. Our kids are very interested in that. So we will continue to expand electives, change those electives based on what our students are asking for. Year three, we're focusing on the full micro school implementation and a school-wide competency-based grading. So full integration, school-wide PBL, and again, the competency-based. Year four, we will move into innovation and building the leadership capacity. So again, we now start to refine the micro school that's across the entire campus. We look at our student leadership, which, by the way, I forgot to mention, we also now have web on our campus, which is our mentoring program between our eighth graders and our sixth graders. So we started that as well. Competency-based refinement will also happen in that year four. So year five, district leadership and continuous innovation. So you're looking at school leadership in PBL and competency-based education. You're also looking at sustainability and continuous improvement. So going back, what's working, what's not working, how do we grow, how do we improve, and how do we adjust to our student needs? Questions?
No, I'm so glad you brought up the, the point that you look at the data and you're making a lot of decisions, because that's one of the things I worry about in this whole school redesign process, because it's great to have all these fun things, but how is that, in the end, really affecting the students? Because we do want competent citizens, and if, still, if we, they might feel great about themselves, but if they can't read, or write, or do math, we haven't done a great job. So I love that you're still focusing on the data in the end of this, because, again, that's one of our bottom-line points, is, yes, we can do all this, and I think we definitely can, but we have to see the results at the end and see that it's fruitful, all this effort. So I appreciate that.
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah.
Just, so the first two years, there was a high focus at our campus on the social, emotional, and the behavior. Like, that was the need that was, that needed to be addressed right away on our campus. And so what we're seeing is that evolution of us now going into the academics. We, you can't be all the way social, emotional, and you can't always be all the way academic. So the focus is being in the middle for our kids and adjusting based on their needs. So, thank you. It's intentional for us.
Well, and I think also, like, asking the kids what they want. One of the things that we've done in wellness, when we have those kids during seventh period for that extra elective that they have, is we actually ask them, "What do you want out of this class? I know the things that I want to do, and I know the things that I think would benefit you, but what are the things that you want to do?" We gave all the students a survey. We asked them, "What do you guys need help with? What do you want this class to look like?" And a lot of those students said, "We need help with homework, we need tutorial time, we need time to work with teachers one-on-one and set goals and figure out how we can be better students." And so we've kind of adjusted our wellness class to be what the kids want.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
So just many, many positive things that I want to say about your presentation, just really outstanding. A couple of the things that I just really appreciate are this whole concept, that middle school is a molding time. I would expand it and say, fourth through eighth grade is the time when kids make their decisions. And what you're, what you're doing here is you're giving them that voice. I, I really like the concrete idea that we're going to design our own mascot. I think that is one that they, they will take with them for the next fifty years, and that mascot will be theirs. I also appreciate that on your slide, you did not include the Orange Glen mascot, because it's got a couple weapons involved. But the idea that you're, that you're bringing your kids through a process of making a real change within the community, that, that is enough to take them through that, that process, knowing that they can make a decision, is tremendously empowering. So very much appreciate that. Certainly appreciate the focus on, on data-driven decision-making in this. We're going to look at the data and figure out what more the kids need and whether or not what we're doing is working. So, thank you all very much.
Okay, and our last presentation from North Broadway.
All right. Okay. Last but not least. All right. So I am Cherry Moore. I'm the principal at North Broadway Elementary School, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about North Broadway Elementary School moving from that to the NB Ranch, and the story of our redesign, some of which you've already heard. We have two other design members that weren't able to be here tonight, Mika Mullet and Monique Grauer, but you can see them up there, and I'm going to let the team introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Kyle Albini. I'm the SAI teacher.
I'm Katie Taylor, third grade.
I'm Scott Childress, third grade. I'm the alternate filling in for the two.
Gina Matthew, first grade.
We're going to let our students tell you about our school.
Students of all grades learn how to grow roots, vegetables, and plants. We use those to run a farmer's market and we can learn about farm to table contests and business. We explore our talents and careers in specialty ranch classes like woodwork and home construction. We also learn how to give advice to our community and environment by giving to shelters, giving to elders, and helping families.
At the NB Ranch, we learn how, by focusing on sustainability and community, we can make an impact on the world, all while learning grade level standards and about ourselves.
Take lead, Broncos!
Take lead, Broncos!
Right. So those are our students trying to help you understand a little bit about the NB Ranch. So Kyle, come on up and tell us what our vision is.
So we spent a lot of time working through our mission and our vision. I think that, as we've heard tonight, it's really important to just know the direction that you're moving in, your identity as a school. And so our vision at the NB Ranch is that we aspire to develop within each student a foundation of community and knowledge of sustainability, while where environment and learning are intertwined. And the NB Ranch mission is that students will explore our talents and skills, cultivate relationships, connect with nature, achieve our personal best, and know the impact on their world. And our slogan is "Take Lead." This is the infographic or our logo that we came up with, with the help of a graphic designer. And so we really just wanted to, to implement our mission and our vision. So we have the horseshoe, we have the agricultural land, the Bronco, and we also have kind of our own pillars or the words within our mission, to explore, cultivate, connect, achieve, and know their impact. And that's all kind of centered around the basis of, or the foundation of, community and sustainability. And it's the NB Ranch, home of the Broncos.
So you're probably wondering, how did we become a ranch? Because you just had this little school, and now we're the NB Ranch. So, to do that, we went through the design-thinking process that all the schools have been going through. We focused on getting input from our parents, our students, running a lot of meetings with them, doing Google Forms, because we all know, some people like to talk out at meetings, and other peoples don't prefer that. So, we wanted to make sure we were getting everybody's input. So we did that through that. We also did redesign updates at all of our parent leadership meetings to kind of get their ideas and feedback as we went along. Then we included all of our certificated and classified staff on the same journey we were going on. It was really important for us, because we were learning so much on these visits, to figure out how to bring that to the staff. So we started the year with where North Broadway had been, connecting that to the framework for the future. Then we started bringing back the learning from our walks and our visits, so that they could see the videos or the pictures, because we took lots and lots of pictures, to show them what it was. We spent a couple staff meetings vision casting, like, okay, here's what we've seen, here's what we're thinking. Here's what we're thinking and sharing that with staff. And again, taking not only input in the meetings, but also sending them Google Forms so that people could give us private information about what they really thought in the design thinking. And we really did that by just narrowing it down to, okay, what do we love Broncos and what do we like? And then what do we not see that, or what is important to us but we don't see? Like standards was really important to our team, but we didn't always see that in like major parts of design. We also looked at what was uniquely North Broadway. North Broadway, as you heard from the video, has a lot of science-based projects, partners within the community. We had Farm to Table already going on in this little tiny area where we serve the oranges that are grown in the secret garden. We have a lot of unused land, so we wanted to pull all those things together to figure it out. And then took lots and lots and lots of chart paper and drawings and crossing things out and reiterating. So you can see a little bit of our thinking along the way. All right, now we're going to talk a little bit about a day in the life of.
So we're going to talk about a day in the life of the NB Ranch Broncos. So we're starting with small learning communities. And this is where we cultivate relationships and build communities through mentorships between students and staff in cross-grade level small learning communities called Roundups. And when staff, I mean, principal, SEI, librarian, school psychologist, social worker, everybody in, on our campus is involved in this. We developed the NB Ranch culture through monthly activities that create strong adult-student connections. And our Roundups will be maintained for the duration of the student's NB career. So if I have a TK, they will come with, to me every month until they're in fifth grade, through fifth grade.
All right. Some of our plan for the learner agency, we really wanted to give our students that choice and the voice, their voice through our Ranch Explore classes. We wanted to increase our flexible learning spaces by having new outdoor learning labs and also giving students choice in demonstrating their learning and instead of just assessments with standards-based units of study, maybe portfolios coming up soon, different ways that they could show us what they learned besides just a test. Some of our current Ranch Explore classes, these are just a few of them of our 27, by the way, new Ranch Explore classes that we have going on today. One, Design and Engineer, Fairy Gardens, American Sign Language, Advertising and Marketing, Earth Art, Junior Ranger, Firefighters, the fire truck came to North Broadway Ranch, and Content Creation, Astronomy, Peer Mentorship with some of our special education students. This is me too. Covering for other people. All right. So during our dedicated interdisciplinary time, students will begin researching essential questions developed by grade-level teams using the ELA Science and Social Studies standards and curriculum. And these lessons and projects will be centered around sustainability and community as well as our specialty ranch classes, which will then all build towards our student-led, school-wide farmer's market. We're really excited.
For the authentic assessment of competency, we are going to continue to utilize the grade-level standards. As you mentioned, those are still important, hitting on those standards. And we are also going to begin to develop some EUSD learner profiles and some competencies based off of the whole learner outcomes. We are going, are working towards some yearly portfolios, which will support the learner self-assessment. And then eventually, we are working towards that school-wide, student-led farmer's market where they'll be able to solve real-world challenges and also develop their entrepreneurial skills. And some of those ranch classes are already lending themselves to some of those skill areas, such as the design and marketing, some of the economics areas. So for fourth and fifth grade, we would like to develop a culminating exhibition where students will be able to really show their impact on the world and continue to just really self-assess and be able to, yeah, be able to self-assess and identify those areas.
So beyond school learning, students will be connected to the industry and community partners through field trips, presentations, service learning, and opportunities. We've already had, the Sunrise Rotary has come out and put in an outdoor classroom. It's really pretty. If you get a chance, come check it out. We also have been in communication with the high school FFA. We actually took our kids last year to Escondido High School. It was amazing. We, that's where we've gotten a lot of our ideas. So hopefully getting stronger connections there and working with them on this. They're right down the street. Mountain Meadow Mushroom Farm is right up the road and we've been in communication with them. It's actually run by a former North Broadway family. The Escondido Community Garden was started by a former North Broadway teacher, Beth Mercurio. So we're looking for some partnership there as well. Once our gardens are up and running, we'd like to be able to donate any extra food, interfaith community services. We also have Meadowbrook Senior Living right down the road from us that we would like to provide an opportunity to bring fresh flowers, produce to their residents once everything is up and going.
And then back to the important stuff, how are kids learning and using our curriculum? So we will continue with the high levels of collaboration we have in our teaching and learning cycles that we do during our weekly collaborations. We're going to focus on some essential question progressions so that we have a TK to fifth grade kind of sequential progression because we don't want it to be all disjointed. We want it to make sense. There'll be definitions for ranch culture and that is going to be like our identity. There's perseverance, there's going to be high-quality work, all these pieces. And we want it to again, grow in a progression TK to five. The grade levels have responsibility, different responsibilities in a student-led farmer's market. Some grade levels might be doing the marketing, some grade levels might be doing the financial part of it. So we'll be working on that. And then, like we said, organizing farm-to-table, or farm-to-schools, they call it now, donations and then even the composting. So like, what do we do with all this? We got our first bag of lettuce just today. So we're going to be doing all that with, it's very important to us that it's all sequenced and it makes sense so that a child goes through and doesn't repeat different things, but their knowledge keeps building. Okay?
So now our big moves. So you see the nice big checkmark because we are in this one. Number one, implement Roundups to cultivate community and mentorship. Our action steps we took were define ranch culture, which are high-quality work, perseverance, interdependence, collaboration, dedication, pride, and celebrations. We developed a system for grouping students and maintaining mentors. We created a curriculum for teachers to use, all certified staff teaching, and a majority of sped students included.
Big move number two, implementation of Ranch Time and Ranch Explore classes. We have started, like I said, 27 Ranch Explore classes to give students that choice. They get to choose amongst their grade-level team. We just concluded our last day of our first round today. It was really exciting and the kids were so excited, having so much fun today. Our Ranch Time schedule, that's done. Our teachers advertising their Explore classes for the student choice. So we all made a little slide, not saying who we were, so that if they love Mr. Childress, they don't just pick him because that happened. So we didn't want them to know who was teaching it. We all made a slide and then the students chose their first choice and we grouped them that way. Then, let's see here, inter-grade level rotation. We've done it. We've done all of this. It's amazing. Some of the classes that our team has done and finished up today. Gina, she did this engineering and designing of these adorable fairy gardens. Mr. Albini was teaching sign language. Mr. Childress brought the fire truck for the Wildland Junior Firefighters. They got a little, threw me a little badge. We also had Habitat Heroes where they created these actual habitats with using things around the school and some extra materials that the teacher brought in. Some students created volcanoes in science exploration. And my class did Adventures in Advertising and Marketing where they came up with their product for their food truck and had to come up with a logo and design and made little tiny food trucks. So fun.
And the big move number three, which as you can see is in progress, is creating that student-led, school-wide farmer's market. So we have already created the grade-level focus areas. TK through first is working on kind of upcycling a little bit of the secret garden and developing a fruit and vegetable garden. So they each have, each class has, I believe, one planter or two planters that they're working on getting some new soil into and beginning to plant for the fruit and vegetable soil gardens. Second and third grade, the hydroponic gardens, as you can see in the pictures, that was, I think, three weeks and that's a little classroom hydroponics kit. We received a grant through Green Our Planet. And so we are developing the hydroponics for the second and third grade, for the second and third grade classes. And we also got a big commercial unit that we put in the NPR room. And as Ms. Moore mentioned, we did our first little harvest today of some arugula and some lettuce. And so, yeah, then the TK through first and the fourth and, or TK and first is working with Green Our Planet also and they're utilizing the Garden Connect. So there's Hydro Connect and Garden Connect. It's two different programs. But they're all kind of interlaced and interconnected. And so we're looking at the grade-level focus areas on how we're going to be able to keep these, the turnover with the plants and be able to continue to grow. And there's also a curriculum that goes with the Green Our Planet where they're able to learn about the hydroponic systems and learn about the Garden Connect. And so fourth and fifth grade is going to begin working on the native gardens. They have had an area cleared out and so they will be working more on native gardens as like succulent gardens and sort of native plants. We're going to, we are in the process of cleaning up and modifying our current garden, like I said, upcycling a few. You can see the planter boxes are somewhat older, so we're working on just kind of repurposing those and getting some new soil in there, which also goes to the mushroom farm. They develop a lot of compost. So we're making a lot of community partnerships and connections. And then creating a five-year physical master plan for increasing our outdoor learning spaces and writing a lot of grants and everything to receive funding for some of those outdoor learning spaces and also for developing new gardens, such as a pollinator garden. We have a wellness garden in the works with a, what is that thing called again? A labyrinth. So it's out by the, out by the recess area and so that's in the works as well. And then also just creating either succulent botanical, which is kind of already being implemented in those native gardens.
Big move number four, the staff and students are simultaneously learning that EUSD whole learner outcomes. So the first action step was to develop a PD sequence for staff. One of these things, these are the things that are still in progress and we're working on. We've already began teaching the staff. We're going to use the grade-level progressions to then develop competencies for assessment for our students, start implementing them in our TLC cycle. So as we create that unit or that six-week to eight-week time that we're focusing on that data, we're using some of those competencies for our data as well. Begin student lesson sequences using the learner outcomes and begin gathering evidence and developing student-friendly competencies and rubrics.
All right. Big move number five, create staff strategic teams to build the NB Ranch. So our action steps are community partnerships, which I've discussed, grant donations, like Kyle was just talking about, to get some of those things up and off the ground, curriculum and standards, garden hydroponics, and Roundups Ranch Culture, all of which are currently all in the forward process of moving along.
And those are actually pictures of each of the staff members all in their groups because all of the staff is also selected what they want to work on. So they are now all in those groups, making all this work come forward. Takes a lot to become a ranch. All right. So five-year action plan. So the big thing was strategic teams because as a small design team, we can't do all of this and you can't really change a school unless everybody's on board. So all staff picked their strategic teams. We actually did decide to make goals for the teams this year so that they knew what they were working for. We're now working on how do those teams communicate? So all our efforts are going to like specific activities. But we're working on that ahead of time. We are figuring out ranch culture and everyone's teaching the same lessons, but then we need to figure out how do we grow it from a TK? What does perseverance look like for TK compared to a fifth grader? So we'll be working on that next year. We, we're going to wait and do portfolios next year, but you know, why not start again? So we decided, we're working on writing. Everybody's working on writing. We all did three baselines at the beginning of the year. So we want to just start with a writing portfolio and start adding some of the, because they're all doing conferences with their kids about iReady and what is your goal? So we decided, do it. Let's just start with what we've got going on. And then we'll start figuring out how that's going to work in the next couple of years. In 26, 27, we want to be able to increase the farmer's market. And you keep hearing about this farmer's market. It's kind of the guiding light that keeps all of these things kind of connected and going forward. And so we're going to start really small this year with, at our Friday flags, letting people donate money to pick up bags of lettuce, bags of arugula, whatever we're growing. But eventually, we want to be able to do that more frequently and then build in the financial literacy, the advertising, the marketing, all of those type of skills. We will be continuing to revise our plans and our portfolios. We'll be adding celebrations because that's one of our important ranch cultures to celebrate the learning that students are doing. And so shifting from just maybe an open house once a year to having events where we showcase what kids have learned and letting them speak to those things. In 27, 28, we should have our fourth and fifth grade environmental science project started. We wanted to wait and kind of see how these things develop so we could really invent some programs and plans for the fourth and fifth graders to be able to show how do they have impact on the world? Because that's really important to us. We will be expanding Ranch Time and the connections to careers because, like you heard, the fire truck was there today. It's important for them to know that when they're learning things, because we're teaching them thinking skills and we're teaching them problem-solving skills. So we want them to know, how does that grow up into a career? Then in 28, 29, because everybody is, are we going to have animals? And I said, let's keep the plants alive first, after the plants have lived. Then, we maybe in a few years could talk about small animal studies because remember, we have a, Escondido High School, they have the big animals. We don't need the big animals. They can have the big animals and we just go visit them. So we'll probably do that then and consider that. And then we're going to celebrate because our kindergartners will now be fifth graders at this time. And so we'll be able to see, how has this all grown up over the years? These are a couple pictures of things that we've already seen. We've got an increase in authentic learning experiences and personalized learning just from what we've done. Choice and product, choice and content, building in authentic audiences for our kids when they're presenting, writing, those kind of things. We have seen an increase in, because one of the things when we brought in the kids on what do you like? They like to learn outside. And so we've increased different ways to make mobile classrooms, written grants for that. We've had people come and say, hey, we want to do a service project. Great, we want an outdoor classroom right here. So those kind of things. And I have seen more people taking kids outside to teach more subjects, not just go garden. They're out there doing science in one of these pictures. They're out there doing reading and partnering up to have content, our conversations about theme in one of the other pictures. So they're really just taking the kids outside to be able to learn the regular lessons. Now, you may have, you may know that all these things are going to eventually take money. Yes. So we're not asking for anything. We just wanted you to know our wish list because, you know, when you run out of hydroponic supplies, we've got to buy them. Now, we're very good, the ranch is getting very good at getting a lot of community donations and making great partnerships. We've had Grungebos donate supplies because you can't run a garden without some tools. We didn't have any shovels. Kind of a problem on a ranch. So we've had them donate supplies. Jimbo's just donated 100 pumpkins. So we are doing a great job of that. But we wanted you to know there are going to take, there are going to be some needs that will be either resources, time, or actual materials. Even just listing that we'll have to collaborate with Grounds and M&amp;O. I talk to them all the time because we don't want to put a garden somewhere where that's not going to work, right? So we wanted you to know why we're asking that. So we wanted you to know why we're asking that. We be aware of some of the things that the design's going to take, but we're not asking you for anything now. Just want you to know. All right. We want to talk to you about a student and this was one of Kyle's students. So I'm going to let him talk about this picture and why it's so important to our team.
So when the whole redesign process came up and we had the opportunity as a school, Cherry let us know that we had a really cool opportunity to be able to redesign, reimagine, just to really think outside the box on what our students want, what the community members want, what we as teachers want, just as a collective whole of what the North Broadway Elementary School is and where it could go. There, I, we had the secret garden and basically I was taking a couple of students who had a very difficult time in the classroom. And we would just kind of go up there and take some breaks. And there are times where like I haven't seen certain kids smile like almost ever. And so it was just really impactful to see them, you know, getting their hands dirty, getting to just somewhat be kids and experience that outdoor environment. And then just the level of engagement when we would go back into the classroom, their willingness to try the academics and their willingness to just put forth an effort just from maybe a 15-minute quick walk up to the garden and just planting a couple of things or helping me clean up, cut down certain things. And so I think it was just super impactful. And then with the whole concept of all of our community members, all of our community partners, kind of Escondido being kind of based in agriculture and just, everything seemed to just kind of fit so perfectly. And so when Cherry mentioned, you know, bringing in the MB Ranch, it was just perfect and it made sense in so many different ways. But yeah, so a picture is worth a thousand words. And I had him write a little summary about what he enjoys about it and everything. And so he basically said, I like gardening and helping. It makes coming to school more fun. I want to learn more about growing flowers and vegetables. They also, or he also liked collecting things to put in the soil bins. We started a couple compost bins. And so we would go up there, we'd kind of check in on it. So yeah, just, I think the level of engagement really increased. And it's not just the engagement of going up to the garden. It's just flows over into so many different aspects. So yeah, just that social emotional piece, the academic piece, just everything kind of combined. And it was a really just impactful moment for me. And so I think everything we're doing is just absolutely continuing to stay on track and stay kind of in coordination with everything that we kind of were envisioning to start. So it's been really, really cool to see.
All right, now you can see this child brings everybody to tears usually in the team because it was life-changing for this little boy. And so when we think of our kids out there, we're doing this because we're trying to get them engaged. And if we can't get them to engage with learning, we have to find ways to get them and that's what this is doing. So we wanted to just thank you because we've said the whole time, when in your career have you ever been asked to just redesign a school? Like has anybody done this before this? We're all, the first meetings, we're all like, what are we doing? We have to, what are the parameters? Like, so it has been an amazing, life-changing for the students, for our staff, for EUST as a whole. So we really appreciate all of the efforts being put towards this and the ability to do this for our kids. So thank you. And as we say on North Broadway, take lead! And do you have any questions?
I just had a comment. I really like how you are, also have that focus on the adult to a student, the connection. Because I feel like every survey and every article you read, it just takes that one adult to make that connection to a student. And especially if you're being consistent through their whole time at the school as much as possible. I think that's going to have a tremendous impact on our students. And everything else is fantastic, but I really, I really like that piece.
And, excuse me, I, I very much like two threads that I've seen through all of the presentations tonight. One of that, one of them is that we can refocus on specific, authentic learning opportunities and not give up our academics. We can do the literacy, do the math, do the science, do the history, social science, while we're making it more interesting to students. I think, and I think that our district's recognition that we're not only teaching kids to take the state test at the end of the year, we're also preparing them for life. Understanding that all of the fire departments are actively recruiting Latinos and females right now, you know, that make up currently 3% of the firefighting force across the nation. And so giving them those life experiences is dynamite. One of the things that I also really appreciate, especially with your group, is the recognition of our kids' need to be in, within nature, to be in the outdoors, to use their bodies, to be in nature. There is, if you want to get scientific about it, there is a huge and growing mass of research around the need for students to be in nature, to be in contact with the earth, to have those experiences with plants, with animals, with just being outside. And your experience with the young man, who I get the impression may have had some challenges, but when they get into the garden, they're fine or they're better. That's very common. And one of the things that we know about Escondido is that many, a large percentage of our students, of our children citywide, do not have the opportunity to be in the outdoors. They don't have those experiences that many of us would consider normal. They haven't been to the mountains, they haven't been to the ocean, they haven't been in a swimming pool. They haven't, you know, been on a farm, garden, all of those things that are really the core for many of us of childhood. Our kids don't get that experience. So I'm very happy that your school has really taken that as a centerpiece of your program. I also noticed that LR Green with Kit Carson Park right next door and the San De Gito River Park right next door to that, has also taken that as a centerpiece. And I think one of our challenges as a district is that how are we going to, or if it is desired by the school, because this is school-based, but how could we get those same or similar experiences for our students that don't have parks or open space nearby? Mission Middle School and Oak Hill, and well, most of our schools, most of our schools, the vast majority. And so I think that's somewhere where ELOP, I'm very proud. I spoke with the Associate Director of the California State Park System the other day and I told him about how our school district has started taking kids to sixth grade camp, sea camp, camp surf, you know, the kayaking experiences, all of those things. And my only question is, how can we do more so that every one of our students has the same opportunities to do this stuff that the wealthiest students in our county would have? So thank you all very much for, for everything you're doing.
Oh, before you wrap up, I just wanted to say and suggest, looking at your wish list, don't forget about the Escondido Education Foundation and their grant application process. There are, good, good, there are a lot of things. And what I noticed, all of the presentations is helping to reengage our students. After a time when we had a lot of learning loss because children were isolated and, and had to, had to learn virtually. So I think all of you show so, such enthusiasm and engagement and I think that's really important. And I wish you all success and I'm looking forward to the five years and beyond. Done.
All right. First I'll start off, but let's just have another round of applause for all of you. It's definitely not easy coming into this boardroom. Someplace you're not used to being and speaking in public, that's easy for, not easy for all of us. So thank you all for coming out and sharing this with us. It's obvious, the passion that has gone into this for improving our student lives, that all of you have been putting into this work. And so I really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for the work that you put into all of this that we're doing here. And then all of the opportunities to reiterate some of what our board members said, that the opportunities for learning, that they will carry on into their lives beyond our schools that will make them productive citizens. It's exactly what Escondido needs and you guys are bringing it home. And we've started this year with the second group of schools doing the redesign process. And I hope that they're watching from home because you guys are just a tremendous example for what they're going to be able to do as they go through the redesign process. And so that being said, I wanted to come up as I usually do, let's talk a little bit about some dollars as Ms. Moore brought up herself, the dollars. And so a couple of years ago, we were blessed to receive the Mackenzie Scott donation that we later have invested and we're earning interest on. And I just wanted to check back in with the board. Because when we talked about that originally, we were going to set that money aside to support and to help launch these redesigns at these schools and this group and beyond. And so let's talk about what we have when it comes to that. So we did receive the $16 million from Mackenzie Scott and we put that into an investment account. And we earned about $600,000 a year in interest on that. And it was in our treasury account before that. So so far we've amassed $996,000, nearly a million dollars, that I wanted to talk with the board about. Is this something that you want to give us direction to continue down that path? Because then our staff, some of them are here today. We'll be working with these schools and in our next group and the group beyond to develop their needs and what they absolutely need to have to continue with these redesigns and really bring them home. And so if this is something that you would like us to continue to do with these dollars that we have here, I want to hear from you tonight. And then we're going to go to work with these groups here and the next group and so on to develop those projects and really, really redesign our schools for what our students need. Just to hear from you.
It had occurred to me that this is exactly the purpose of the Mackenzie Scott donation to, to do, to ensure projects like this. So I'm totally on board, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the purpose. And I think that's why we set the money aside because it's, I mean, that would easily be absorbed into our budget. But I think it was important that we set the money aside to do something transformative to our district with it. And I think that's what our focus should be. And we can see the enthusiasm that our teachers have for it. I mean, just to see the teachers excited and the ideas that they have. I mean, we are so blessed with all these teachers that they have all these ideas and the principles as well. I'm not forgetting the principles, but that they, that they have all these things that we can do for our students. And I think that was, you know, an important step for us to set that aside and be faithful, especially in hard budget times, that we want this to be transformative for our district.
I concur with everything that's been said.
I want to thank the teachers and the staffs that came out tonight. You guys are truly leading the way. To quote, you guys all hit it out of the park. We, when we started this journey, we didn't know what it was going to look like. And you are, you are truly co-constructing and co-designing the school you want to work in that you would want to send your own kids to. And that's the goal. Each one of you is so unique to yourselves and your areas and your communities, but there is a common thread between all of them. And that's the enthusiasm, very learner-centered and very much, you guys are leading the way. So thank you. Our kids, thank you. So word of advice, you guys are in charge of your own pace. And some of those plans I saw, whoa, you guys are tackling on a lot. You've got to make sure it's sustainable. So you guys own the timeline as well. So it's okay to shift something, pause something, just keep the momentum going. That's the most important, so thank you.
So thank you all. And the, the only thing I have to say is that our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, November 14th at 7:00 PM. And so thank you again for your contributions and for your love of the children that you teach. It's very evident. We are adjourned. Why? Everybody's...